I now call the January 12th, 2016 work session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Bailey lead us in the pledge of allegiance and after that, Councilmember Larson will give us an invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our eternal heavenly Father, we are thankful for the opportunity to be here as councilman and mayor for city of Riverton. We love to serve and to help. Father bless us with the insight and understanding that we might just do that, serve and help. Bless those people in need of a blessing and we say this humbly, name thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Yes, your honor, Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
I am present and declare that we have quorum tonight. The chairman entertained a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve agenda.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. There votes aye. First item on the agenda tonight is a report from the Riverton Women's Splash Pad Group. That's your cue.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, mayor and councilmembers for taking the time, listen to us tonight. I'm Christina Olson. If you don't know, I'm currently president of the Splash Pad Group. And we have Rebecca Jones over here. She's our fundraising chair. She's amazing. And Julie Eckley is currently our vice president. I put together a PowerPoint to just show you some key points of some things that we have been working on. We thought it would be a great idea to present, to share with you what some of our goals and what we hope to achieve and also what our fundraising committee has achieved and also a timeline that we feel like is a good goal and something that can be reasonably met. So we started, as you know, in June. We met as a group and our goal is to obviously bring a splash pad to Riverton, to bring something that's fun, to bring families together, hopefully improve the community and bring people from out of town as well. So in addition to the splash pad, as we've continued, we have decided that we want to improve the community and hopefully help City Park as well. And I'll get into that more, but... So this is the idea of a splash pad that we have. Splash pads can be ground level features, fountains, as well as above-ground vertical features, which all of them spray water. Families and kids love them. They don't need to be staffed because there's no standing water, basically. It all drains. This is an informal bid that we received from a splash pad company. I have talked to two companies that are specifically splash pad companies, as well as two other architectural and engineering companies that specialize in water features as well. So this is only one, but I wanted to show you a basic design that they put together for us that I could share with you. The idea is, you see, it's kind of in circles. So the idea is each circle would be different age groups and that's something that the community has said, you know, we want something that will help, will be able to be for little children, as well as middle-aged children and older children. So it's something that we would change around in the design. We asked them to do a 75 by 75 foot feature, which seems large. It's over 5,000 square feet, but you have to consider around the edge of the splash pad, they do a dry zone, which is three or four feet wide. So that takes away, I don't know what my, I can't remember the math exactly. Let's see. So that would leave about 4,000 square feet of wet zone of playing. And they say you need to account for about 30 square foot per child. So that would be a capacity of about 130 kids. It has 10 to 11 vertical features and the informal bid was about $190,000. And this company does, from design to build, from start to finish, it's a turnkey. And they, that, that specific one has, let me just read you a couple of things about it. It has 36 ground level nozzles. And all of the companies that we've talked to just did a recyclable water tank. So they say that a commercial grade tank is about 750 gallons. So you pay to refill that. They said it just depends on usage, how much you want to refill it. So you pay for the water and then you pay for the filters to be changed monthly. They said maybe $60 to $80 a month. I know this is all kind of informal. And then they said, they, they gave me an estimate to power, to give power to it, is between 200, 250 to $300 a month. So I just wanted to throw those figures out there to show that it's not a lot of money to maintain this, especially if we use it four to five months out of the year. Let's see. Oh, and they're all built with a chlorination system and a UV sanitizer so that when they recycle the water, they meet all the health codes that I'm sure will be thrown at us. Let's see. So of course, the price will vary by company. I spoke with another architectural engineering company that said a splash pad this size might be upwards of $300,000 to $400,000. So it, of course, we can't nail that or pin that down until we choose a company and get a design. Oh, and these splash pads are built with curfews. So there's only certain times of the day that it can be activated and that they have activation poles so that if nobody's there, the water doesn't run. But if kids come, they can actually go up and touch the pole and it will turn on. So that's something that is a fun, a nice feature. So as far as what we have done for community outreach, in the very beginning, we were open to location as we opened this up online. We had a big online discussion. Our Facebook group that was initially started reached over 2,000 members in the first week. And this was the poll that was originally, I copied and pasted it from Facebook. And this was the poll that was put up there. And we felt like there was a strong support from the community to help revitalize City Park. Over about 148 votes said that they thought City Park was a great idea. We also have, in the beginning, there was a petition that we have, a written petition and online petition that had over 600 signatures from the community to, that they wanted to help revitalize City Park and put it in City Park. We've had two open house meetings. The very first one was not very well attended. We had about 15 people there, but that is where we gained some of our committee members. So it was good. Our second open house meeting, we did a Christmas activity for families. We invited kids to come in and do some activities and visit with Santa and they also were able to vote on their favorite splash pad features. Generally overwhelming support for the vertical above-ground features is what families and kids want to see in a splash pad. We've had surveys at the open house. I also surveyed parents. And of those surveys that were returned, like I said, 95% were in favor of the vertical above-ground features. And then also, people are in favor of doing it in City Park, but there are some hesitations as far as vandalism or the drains and water not being used properly. So 75% of community members want to have a fence put around it. So I, I think that that's something definitely to consider. And then, like I said, the surveys showed about 92% were in favor of doing it in City Park. So there's a handful of people that are opposed, but generally I do feel like the community wants to see it there. It makes sense to put it in the center of town where it can help the park, we hope. So... These are just some fun pictures. I just wanted to show you briefly of some kids that we took pictures of at our community open house. The kids had a lot of fun with it. We kept a tally of their favorite water park features or splash pad features that I have that we can use in the future when designing begins. So this is just obviously a map of City Park. These are the two main locations that we've considered as a group and we have shared with the community as well at the open house meetings. The only thing we'd like to consider in choosing a location is safety from busy roads, especially if it's, if it's not in the end going to be fenced. It's something that definitely needs to be considered, not having little kids running out into the roads. With big families coming into the park, I think there needs to be ease of access to restrooms if there's changing into swimming wear, however that goes. Shade, I think both of these areas have a lot of shade. A lot of moms like the idea of, of a as well because they can watch their kids in the playground, as well as the skate park and the water park. So it's kind of a good central location. We've actually been out there and measured and for 75 by 75, there's plenty of space in those two areas to put a splash pad. So obviously that's something to consider in the future, but something to think about. So we had our first major fundraiser. We did a New Year's Eve formal. We brought in close to $10,000 for that event. So right now our account stands a little bit above 10,000. I believe we had a couple of donations and we have donation jars around town that are being gathered as well. There are, we have an amazing fundraising chair, Ms. Rebecca. She has so many ideas and she's so excited and she has all these ideas planned in the next six months, hopeful that we can put together soon. And we will continue our fundraising meetings next week to decide exactly how to go forward with that. But there was a lot of feedback from the community that they wanted to continue the New Year's Eve formal every year. So that's something that we hope to continue and gain money from. We have looked into several grants. These are a list of the grants that we have looked at. Kirby Despain is in charge of our grants and was unable to come tonight. But I spoke with her earlier today and several times and she said these, a lot of these grants vary anywhere between $10,000 and $100,000. It just depends. And sometimes you apply for a amount and they'll give you, they'll assign you a number or less. But we are definitely moving forward and actively searching and applying for these grants. So this is a timeline that we put together and I know a lot of this, this could change slightly, obviously, as things go on. But our goal right now is to raise $120,000 by early summer this year. And that's through a large grant that we're hoping on, as well as we're hoping for some city funding that we will formally present and come to at a later date. And then our own fundraising. Hopefully, summer 2016, we can choose a splash pad company and begin designing. We really hope that we can start doing that by this fall. And then if we go off the earlier bid, you know, we're looking at anywhere between 200 and $250,000 if we're looking at shade structures and sidewalks and things like that that need to be done. So we, this timeline is, is going for a $250,000 budget. So we hope that it can be open and we can have fun by midsummer 2017. Two years ago from, two years from where we initially started is the hope. So we appreciate your support and we'd like to just keep going with this and see it happen and see it done and brought to the community. So that's all I have prepared. Are there any questions?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay.
We're excited. We think it's a great project for the City Park. And as we get into our budget process, we'll be looking at that to see how much money we can throw in that direction.
Yeah.
From the city. And we've talked to the rec board, County 25 Rec Board. And so they'll probably be able to give you something. And so...
Great.
We're really thrilled that you're so aggressive in finding money and going after it. This is great. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me unhook this here and I will be done. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Okay, the next, the next item on the agenda is a presentation from JAVIATION.
So I too want to say thank you for letting us come up here tonight. I'm Jim Flewer with JAVIATION. And what we wanted to do was we, a while back, we presented to the airport board and we kind of identified the, the project that we had just completed and identified kind of where the needs were, why the project was done. And one of the things, I know Mike was up there, he brought up, he says it might be a good, a good idea to come back to the city and have kind of that same conversation about what the project was and what we did. So one of the things we were looking at was identifying also the capital improvement plan. So what we wanted to do was just kind of give you a snapshot of those projects. How do projects get put on the capital improvement plan? Kind of how often is the capital improvement plan analyzed? Who looks at it? How does it get approved? So I'll turn it over to Alex and Jeremy to kind of talk about that. I would guess as time goes on, if you have questions, as we're going through the presentation, we're happy to answer any questions as you go.
There he is. So, yep, as Jim mentioned, I'm Alex Nodich. And I was gonna present to you guys on the runway reconstruction project that we just completed. It's a great project to look at because of kind of the history of how it came about and kind of the, how the, kind of the CIP discussions came about with the FAA and, you know, this project being as big as it was, was, was on the FAA's radar for quite a while. And then we'll also go into kind of what is exact, what is the CIP. Again, I'm Alex Nodich. I was the project manager on this project. Tim Rhodes was the deputy project manager and Jeremy Packer was our construction manager on site. So the kind of the, where I would like to start is just kind of how did the, did the Runway 10 project come to be? And then that'll lead us into kind of a discussion of the airport CIP and how that's developed with, with help of Kyle and Paul. So this, this project is, is very interesting in that it, it kind of started back in, in 1989. The FAA published requirements in their advisory circulars to govern how Part 139 Commercial Service airports were built, how they're managed and maintained. And shortly thereafter, it was identified that the runway in Riverton had a non-standard longitudinal gradient. The, the red line, it was the existing runway. It sloped down. It's Runway 10, so the west side of the runway sloped down at a percent and a half. The FAA looked at that and compared it to their advisory circulars, which the maximum is 0.8%. So about half of what it was. So that's kind of where, where this project got, got the idea from. And it really kind of took shape in the year 2000 with the update of the airport master plan. In the master plan, especially projects of this magnitude, the FAA is looking for alternative analysis, looking that you have identified the problem and then kind of come up with solutions for it. And being that this was a, a non-standard condition on a runway at a commercial service airport, it was very important that, you know, the alternative, the alternative analysis be done and that a solution be proposed. So in that 2000 master plan, there were several different alternatives and it turned out that the preferred alternative at that time was actually to extend the runway to the west, relocate Paradise Valley Road and correct the non-standard condition that way. The preliminary designs to that end continued for the, kind of for the next four years. In 2005, at the CIP discussion, which we'll kind of talk about in a second, but at the CIP discussion, the FAA looked at the preliminary findings of those, of that study and decided that an extension was not, not feasible, that it was, it was too expensive. It required a little bit too much, more than they were willing to put forward towards the project. So that's, at that time, that's when the, the alternative came up that we wouldn't extend it, but that we would lower it to meet the design standards at 0.8% on the longitude and gradient. So the, the design then went forward from 2005 and 2006, 2007 is when the design was actually completed. The design that we used here just this last year to, to complete that project was done in 2006, 2007. And originally that, this project was slated to begin a lot earlier than 2015, but in 2007, coordination with the airport and the FAA during their CIP discussions provided that the FAA did not, to be honest, they said they, they didn't have the money to do it at that time. So it was kind of shelved and in favor of some more pressing projects. For example, in 2008, they did the concrete commercial apron reconstruction to kind of correct FOD issues that, that had developed on the commercial apron. So they, it was kind of, it was shelved until 2009 when we, we had kind of an opportunity that was pretty unique with the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. At the end of the year, kind of after the CIP discussions, the FAA came to us and said that through the Recovery, the Reinvestment Act, we had so many dollars to spend if the project could be put together in a very, very expedited manner. And we, you know, we had this design sitting on the shelf already. So the airport kind of jumped on the opportunity to get part of this project done. Part of the project was, not only did we have to lower the Runway 10 end, but the Runway 28 end, the east end of the runway also had gradient issues. So we actually reduced that two and a half feet and rebuilt about 700 feet of the runway to meet the 0.8%. And we did that in 2009 with money from the Reinvestment Act. We moved 300,000 cubic yards of dirt from the Runway 10 end, so the, the end that we did this year, we kind of used as much money as we could to do as much of that work as, as we could manage to fit. With that project, we lowered Paradise Valley Road. And at the time in 2009, the Runway 10 lowering was planned, during the CIP discussions, was planned for 2015. So that's kind of where it, where it was locked in. So 2010, the following year to 2014, CIP coordination. There's, on the CIP, there's, you list, you have, you know, lists of projects that you want to do at your airport. And as the 2015 date kind of came, came closer, discussions turned to kind of what else can we do to, to help the airport? You're gonna have a very large project. You can take full advantage of economy of scale. So that's exactly what, what came out of those CIP discussions. The, the surface of Runway 10 to 8 had started to deteriorate just due to, just due to age. So the mill and overlay of that was put into the project. Taxiway alpha lighting deterioration, that was identified actually in the, in 2008 when they did the commercial air carrier ramp, that concrete apron. The lighting circuit was, was found to be compromised. So that was put on the CIP and then it was put into this 2015 project. And then also, the additional taxiways, connector taxiways were, that were discussed in the master plan and on the ALP. And I'll, I'll kind of talk about the ALP a little bit. But those were added. That just increased overall runway environment safety, allowing aircraft to exit the runway faster and give them more ways to, to avoid other aircraft. So that brings us to the present. 2014, they started the, we started the final design, took the design that was completed in 2007 and kind of repackaged it, added these additional items that came out of the CIP discussion. And, and we moved forward with bidding and finally construction. So... Oh, yeah, and, and during kind of the, this, this final design process, the question came up where, I mean, we're removing 800,000 cubic yards of dirt from the Runway 10 end to lower it 12 and a half feet. And you'll see on the ALP that in the future and on the CIP, there's an extension of Runway 119 planned to bump it... one one nine planned to bump it, bump it up in aircraft group and make it available for a wider range of aircraft. And it seemed like the natural place to put all that dirt off the end of there. We compacted it to all the standards that the FAA requires and so when we do that extension, it'll, should be, it should be a slam dunk. It kind of reduces the cost of that project. So you kind of get a double benefit of putting the dirt there and it was close, so it saved this project money. We didn't have to waste it somewhere else. It turned out, turned out really well. So then the, what is the capital improvement plan? I've talked a lot about it. Jeremy will, will hand out the current capital improvement plan. Currently, we're, we're going through a review for twenty sixteen capital improvement plan. So that was the twenty fifteen CIP that was approved at the beginning of last year. So I'll wait a second for him. So on the CIP, you'll see that this is a document that, that gets put out by Y dot Aeronautics every year. You'll, you'll have your project description, you'll have your product, project status, whether it's programmed, whether it's, you know, kind of what, what the project, what the status is in the eyes of Y dot Aeronautics. Requested year for complete, for project completion. And you'll notice on there also in, in twenty sixteen, for example, we requested a project be completed in twenty seventeen, but through their review process, they, they've slated it for twenty sixteen. So it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of a cooperation with Y dot and, you know, they, they do their best to get the projects when we want them, but it doesn't always work out exactly how you'd like. And on there, there's estimated funding sources, whether it's going to be funded by federal dollars, state, local money. And then there's the priority rating, both local and state. And the priority rating locally is just, you know, if, if you had to pick an order on how you wanted to complete the projects from the airport's point of view, that's, that's kind of how you would do it. And then the, the state also gives it a priority based on their priority rating model, which is how they allocate funds. They only have a, kind of a certain, a certain amount of funds that they put out each year. And they look at that priority rating and then that's how they kind of grab projects and, and put them on the CIP. One, one thing to note is on the, on the second page, there's a section, a nine 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 section, and they, projects in that section are not necessarily rejected, it's just they've kind of been shelved because of higher priority projects or that they're, they're far enough out that, that they haven't programmed them in yet. So the development process for the CIP, it's, it's updated yearly in July and August. We just went through a, the, the last round of, of updates. And throughout the year, we're always on the lookout. Paul and Kyle are always on the lookout for projects that can go on the CIP. In, in about the beginning of July, Y dot will send out the email that kind of initiates the CIP process. And once they do that, you, we take those projects that maybe we wanted to add or that kind of we needed to do and we get them on the CIP. It's on a, it's actually on a document very similar to what you have in front of you, just without color. It's just a list of projects. And then we'll also list the projects that are, that are on there already. And, you know, things that can trigger projects, you know, you have pavement failures, you have electrical issues, you can also have, the airports are, well, the airport is inspected every year by the FAA for compliance with part one thirty-nine since it is commercial service. So the inspectors can identify things that they give a timeline to. It's a, a red surface painted hold sign is faded, that the airport has so long to get it corrected before they'll, before they'll be written up. So it's, it's things like that that kind of get added to the, to the CIP where there's already a list of some major projects there. And again, a big one recently has been FAA AC design changes. They've changed geom, geometry requirements, which then force us to create projects to try to meet those, meet those design changes to comply with FAA regulations. So during that process, we, we put together our list of projects and we will send it over to, to Y dot and the FAA and then we'll all sit down and have a conference. Kyle's there, Paul, pretty much everybody involved, the FAA usually has a couple representatives and Y dot. And then you just, we go through our project list. We talk about justifications and funding sources and they provide any feedback to us that we can then incorporate into that, into that project list. If you're going to, if you, if you want to change the, the CIP from what, what's on there, all the, all those kind of discussions happen. So once, once that discussion, that conference is done, we'll make our changes and we'll submit it for review to the FAA and Y dot. So when we submit it, we'll, we'll submit that summary. With the summary, there's, each individual project has its own, they call it the pre-application sheet. It's basically a sheet that gives all the details of the project. It's a very, it gives a very detailed justification for each project. You provide cost estimates that they can review. It's, it's just a very, it's a very detailed snapshot of the project that you propose. And they like to look at the first, the next six years. You have to provide a pre-application sheet so that they can start looking at programming some of those. They typically program projects three years out, but they like to have knowledge of what's coming up, at least six years. We go out a lot farther, obviously, with, with the CIP, but this, when it gets down to six years, it's kind of crunch time for them in their eyes. So we, the airport works real hard to, to get those projects, get those projects buttoned up and, and get FAA and Y dot on board with them. So, and then the, the, they start to get kind of, kind of grumpy if you, if you try to change the CIP for the next two years, because they have that money programmed. And changes within the next two years, really, it, it forces them to go back and, and talk to Aaron, the Aeronautics Committee to try to either get you more money or reallocate the money that you're giving back. For small projects like, like, like emergency paint or things that are on the inspector's list when the FAA comes and inspects, the, Y dot is, is very good at talking, working with the airports to get those smaller projects completed without much pain, even if you're trying to request it for next year or year after. So, once, once the initial review, the initial review set goes out, we will, the FAA and Y dot will collaborate and they look at the funding that's available, look at justifications, they look at the priority rating that they've given each project during their review and then they make changes. They, they have any number of reasons for making changes, mostly to do with funding, but they will make changes and then the Aeronautics Commission will, will take the reviewed and altered document and vote to approve it. And usually this takes place in November. It's a strange year this year, they're doing it in January, about a week and a half. So we'll look to, to get that here. And so once, once they approve the WASP, it's sent out to the airports for a final review and the, the airport has an opportunity again to see what changes were made and if they feel strongly enough that, that they want to kind of either rescind the changes or whatever they want to do, they have an opportunity to make changes and then resubmit back to the FAA and Y dot and for a final time, usually in February. And then the FAA and Y dot will consider those and then they put out a final document. So that's kind of how the, kind of how the WASP process, how it kind of goes and we go through that. Kyle, Paul go through that every year. It's a busy time of year for, for those guys, because it's, it's a document that is, is very integral to the, to the airport and, and to maintaining the airport. It's, there's every project on there, whether it's, I think we're acquiring a mower deck up there this year to, a twelve million dollar runway rehab. It's all, it all must be summarized on this sheet or the, or the state or federal, however you want to. They won't, they won't fund it. So it's a, it's a large task for, especially for Kyle, to get through it every year, but it's a very important process and I think it's, it's good to, to share that with, with everybody involved, with them going. So, kind of how, how I wanted to close, it's, that runway, runway ten project, I think this year, was a culmination of, of a lot of years of, of work by, by the city, by J Aviation and Y dot Aeronautics and the FAA as well. So I, I thought Jeremy was our construction manager and he was gonna jump up here and just give kind of a, an update on what, where the project is and kind of how we're gonna finish it off here. So I'll turn it over to Jeremy.
So I know, as Alex stated, I mean, this has been a project that's twenty-six years in the making, which, which sounds silly, but it was a very large project that had quite an impact on the airport, that, from needing to be done to actually being done. And I know a lot of people have heard, well, this is a big project, you know, this, why did it need to be done? And hopefully it's kind of a little bit clearer now why, why we had to go through it, what, what benefits there were to it. But as far as the actual project itself, you know, you hear a lot of these big projects, oh, this is over budget, this thing's, you know, two years late. And luckily with our project, we, we are dead on schedule. So right now, we are at exactly where we need to be for where we're at. We were able to complete everything needed to do, moving over seven hundred thousand cubic yards of, of dirt, relocating all of that, building a hill that raised the grade almost eighty feet. Some people here have been out there to see it and got to see it kind of midway and that's, that's no small feat, any way you look at it. The amount of pavement that went down was, was incredible. We were somewhere around a little over forty thousand tons of asphalt that went down on the airport in, in just about a month. So as you see, our original phasing schedule there, things shifted a little bit. They actually were moving dirt faster than what they had anticipated, so we were able to get that done. Right now, where we're at, everything is done to this point except a permanent coat of paint that needs to be done out on the airport. We decided to push this back into the spring because if we do it over the winter, the plows get out there, start tearing it up. Your brand new paint looks like it's twenty years old by the time it, the spring rolls around. So right now, we have two days left to get out there, get our permanent coat of paint on the ground. It'll look beautiful all summer, so anybody who's out there will be able to come out and see this nice new pavement with this fresh coat of paint on it. Another thing that I wanted to note is right now, our project is currently under budget. Right now, estimations run us at being a little bit over eight hundred thousand dollars under budget, which seems like a lot. There's a lot of assumptions that go into when we make our estimates for doing this. Our asphalt was a little bit lighter than our estimation, we had a little bit less dirt, swell factor was a little bit different. There's a lot of different dirt out there that we couldn't account for. But what that really means in the end is everybody saves a little bit of money. The city saves some money, FAA saves some money. We still get the exact same work and the exact same quality that we would have gotten before. So luckily, for us, you know, in this day and age, it's hard to see something come in under budget. So since everybody wasn't able to be out there, I know I promised fireworks, but this will have to do. This is kind of a time lapse of how that, that hill that I was talking about off the end of runway one one nine was built. You can see right now where I'm standing, it's about eighty feet below me. That's a pickup truck over there. There's some heavy equipment up there on the hill. And as it slowly gets filled up, you'll see bulldozers, trucks, everything kind of moving around. I mean, it's, it's hard to, to convey from here how much dirt was actually moved. And each one of these shots is about a week apart. So you can see, these guys were really cranking. Seven hundred thousand cubic yards of dirt is a lot. It's, it's, it's hard to fathom how much, how much soil is actually out there. The motor, motorcyclists, the, the dirt bikers love it out there. If you've got kids, that's, that's a heck of a hill out there for sledding. You get a nice gentle slope coming up the other side. So this is, for, for those of you that didn't get to see this, about the best I can do, but there was, there was incredible amount of work. The contractor did a great job. Paul and everybody at the city, the coordination between everybody in order to get this all done was just amazing. Without, without Kyle, we wouldn't have been able to do this. It was, there were some bumps in the road trying to get funding started. In order to get this done before the cold weather came in, we had to start before we actually had the grant. So everybody came together to make this work. So are there any questions, comments, anything on, anything you've heard tonight about our CIP process, the project itself, where the project came from, where we're going?
Doesn't sound like it.
Wonderful.
Okay.
Very much.
It's, that's, that's, it's been, it's been quite a project and, and we've, we've watched it happen, you know? But as the chairman of the airport board viewed, it's like, you know, building, if it, if it was a twenty-story building downtown, everybody would have paid attention to it, but it was all flat ground and up at the airport and kind of out of everybody's eyesight. And so it's not much of a project that, that anybody witnessed and so it's kind of hard to imagine how much work really went into that. And we're impressed with the changes that have taken place up there. Thank you for your efforts.
Your honor.
Go ahead, Mr.
I, I had the pleasure of being on the airport board and we did get to go out and visit several times during the construction and we were involved and pulled fuel to the company that, that did it. And it was an impressive operation and I think it's, credit needs to be given to Kyle and the staff and J Aviation for, you know, pulling this project together. It's a huge project and to be able to get it done on time, under budget, I, I think it's impressive. So thank you very much.
Do we have anything else tonight that we need to take care of, Stephen, if we got a?
Actually, I do have something.
Okay.
Came up today and I'm not, it's kind of me ab lib, but I had the fire department call me today. They sold the old city hall, which has the fire horn on top. For some reason, they have the, the perception that that belongs to the city. And so they say, if you want that, then we need to find a different location for it. I thought it belonged to them and I said, well, how about putting it on top of the fire hall? That seems like a logical spot for it. Oh, no, we don't want to do that. That'd puncture the roof. We're thinking up on, next to the high, old high school, maybe on the Wild Link Tower up there, we could put that. The only reason I bring it up is we're gonna have a meeting with them on Monday, but I guess I wanted to get a little direction from the council as to if everyone is wanting that thing to be going off every time there's a fire going on. Sometimes you have landmarks like the CWC water tower or that, you know, when it goes out or you don't need it anymore, you still leave it there because it's kind of a landmark of the city. That's the same with, with the fire horn. I've had mixed reviews from people. Some people say, how do we get rid of it? I'm tired of waking up my kids in the middle of the night when it goes off. Why do we have to have that in this day and age? You know, people have pagers or cell phones or te- You know, people have pagers or cell phones or texts or however they receive their emergency. Um, and then there's other people that say, I like to hear that because I know there's something going on and, and go find out what's going on. And, and so I guess I wanted just a little bit of direction as to, because I'm leaning more towards if there's no emerg- if, if it doesn't serve any purpose, only just to make a bunch of noise, then I don't see any reason to have it.
Let's say that we loved it. Do you have a place to put it?
Possibly. We, we've been looking at our lease and agreements with Wild Link up there. We leased the space from the school district, kind of right where the skating rink is, kind of off to the side there, off of Tonkin there. Um, we possibly could attach it to there. It doesn't have to be attached to a tower, it could actually be on a, on a pole, a freestanding pole, but they said if you did that, it's not high enough, so you wouldn't hear much of it. That's why it's best on top of a tower or on a building or up on the hill there. So I, I guess I'm just, I don't want to go into a meeting and then find out that everybody's tied to this, this siren going off every time we have an emergency and...
And this is the noon whistle too, right?
Yeah.
How we know what time of lunch is?
Well, because I, I talked to Walt Stickles, he's our emergency manager, and they said in the discussions about the county having an emergency plan, there was talk years ago that they would have this go off if you, you know, two times would be a tornado is coming or, you know, we're not going to get that around here. I mean, when's the last time we've had a tornado? Uh, most, most of the emergencies that we have around, what I can think of is flooding is about it.
Your honor. Well, I'm a traditionalist and I would like to see it kept up. And that's, if for no other reason, just because I'm a traditionalist and I like things the way they were. I've listened to it all my life, so I've, I've been there for seventy-five years, so I would, personally, I would like to keep it.
Mr. Canaan?
I guess my, my concern, Mr. Weaver was talking about moving it, is probably having the next neighborhood that's next door to Tonkin probably show up next week and complain about the fire siren going off in their neighborhood that's now a thousand times louder than it used to be when it was going off.
In somebody el- in somebody else's neighborhood.
So I, I think that's our big problem with trying to relocate it is, you know, you probably move it out of the middle of downtown and you're talking about not moving it possibly closer to a residential area and, uh, I'm, I'm not real sure that's going to make a lot of people happy doing it that way, so. If we, if we keep it, we need to be real careful where we put it.
Your honor, we could move it here on city hall.
Your honor, we could really move it wherever you want. Um, really the issue though, um, and what, what I failed to mention was that in my discussions, like I said, that it's only a perception that I got was it would be on our dime, not their dime. So if we're going to move it, it's going to be a city expense, not, not a, a fire district expense.
So I, I thought it was actually across the street from the old city hall. There's a tower over there. What is that? I don't know.
Yeah, your honor, they said that they sold the old city hall and they had roughly a year or so to get that siren that's on top of it off and, and they believe it belongs to the city and if we want it, then we need to do something with it.
What would it take to get it off of there? Would, would it take a big crane or something to come and...
Sure, sure it would. I, I, like I said, I, I was just made aware of this today, so I, I haven't really had a chance to put a whole lot of thought into it, only my initial reactions.
Your honor. Mr. Bailey?
I guess I would suggest that maybe you do a little investigation into what a pole would cost to put it on, so that we could get a rough estimate of what we would be looking at. And then, yeah, I think city hall property here would be probably the easiest, least contentious place, you know, to put it. And that's going to be the big stick where I think you have. And I guess, do we have any kind of requirements that we need, a, a emergency beacon in town for emergency management or any of that kind of stuff? So, so there's no requirement to have one?
I guess my concern is that would, would tradition, would tradition exceed the salvage value? And, uh, and the cost of moving it and, uh, you know, going and getting it, maybe, maybe it needs to be just sold with the property and just leave it behind. And, uh, I, I just don't know that there's a, well, we need a little more research, I guess, before we're ready to make a decision as to what we could do.
Well, we'll do a little more research.
I'm not sure we have, I'm not sure that we have a consensus showing up here that there's anything to do with this thing.
Your honor, I guess I would say that it'd be difficult to suggest that we spend very much money doing this if we don't have a requirement to do it. And I'm, I, I don't mind the whistle going off, you know, during fires and that kind of stuff either, but I can't see us spending a ton of money moving it and putting it on a pole and all the other things that go with it, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I'm sorry you didn't get any response.
Oh, it's all right. Great help.
Are you, are you sure emergency management doesn't require one in the city? Are you absolutely positively sure?
Well, your honor, I asked our emergency manager, I even asked if he'd looked at the plan, he said it, it, he doesn't, he said it wasn't in there, so.
He's unaware of one.
Yeah, yeah. And, and that's something I have to verify too.
Yeah, at one point in time, I'm sure in the city of Riverton, if you wanted the fire department to come, you had to blow the whistle. Okay? And today, that simply is not the case. And so it's kind of, it's a, it's kind of redundancy.
Your honor. Uh, I'm, Mr. Bailey, at, at, I would like to see what the cost is going to be. I sure as heck don't want to spend three months like you did with the chickens.
Yeah, we probably don't need the engineer. Okay. Anything else tonight? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Been moved?
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, we're adjourned.